It's thirty. Tonight, we have guests. I knew Assistant Superintendent Matt Carrati and Deb was there. He had to discuss some projects going on and the finances behind them. Anytime you'd like to start, whatever you'd like to start with.
Good evening, President DiLicio, Vice President Dolan, and members of the council and members of the public. I just wanted to start by introducing myself to some of you. I know some of you I don't know. But I'd like to introduce myself and a little bit of my background, some of the stuff I've been working on. And then we can get into the projects ongoing and upcoming. I've been with the Water Department. I'm in my twenty-fourth year now. You don't have to look far in my resume to see where I've been. I graduated out of Rose High School. And in October, after graduating at eighteen years old, I was with the Water Department and have been there since. I've been in water treatment plant operations for the majority of that time. And I then accepted at the end of December, the assistant position. And then the vacancy with the superintendent position became available. So I was moved to the acting superintendent position. Anybody that knows me knows that my passion is with the department, with the city and the residents. One of the things I've been working on is communication within the department as well as with residents. Public accessibility, as far as the city's website goes, being able to see water levels, that type of thing. And just the overall interaction with the public. If I get emails, putting a priority to that. Letting people know that they're being heard and being addressed with their concerns. Also, what I've been working on is things with the Fire Department for communication with other departments, but specifically speaking to the Fire Department on our hydrant, fire hydrant. We're just having communication between the two departments if there's issues with the fire hydrant, that it's being properly passed down and that when the Fire Department runs into a problem, the Water Department is getting notified. So just overall communication to address issues. I've been holding weekly staff meetings as well as reviewing logbooks within the department on a weekly basis. So to get into some of the projects now, the Pawtucket interconnection is nearing the final stages where we're within a few weeks away from being done there. I know this is one of those projects that it's been kind of getting kicked down the line where it's been two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. We've had several hurdles to overcome with that. But we are a couple of weeks away and we're kind of doing the final punch list now. One of the things to address with the Pawtucket interconnection, Council Reynolds, I know this is particular interest to you, being in your ward. We do know that that is going to cause a disruption within the distribution system. And myself and the staff are sensitive to that. We're sensitive to the residents being impacted by that. Because as some of you know, the water's flown in one direction for a hundred years and you're essentially reversing the flow. To mitigate that, we are going to have to flush hydrants. So we're shooting for the end of the first week of February to the beginning of the second, second week. I want to have a little bit of a range in a start date, barring any setbacks, just to watch the weather. Because if we're going to be discharging water through fire hydrants, and I'm not talking all over South Attleboro, but the station is essentially behind state line scrap. So the hydrants leading out of there, over in the state line scrap area, basically bordering Cranberry Pond, which poses another thing to be conscious of when you have water and you're discharging chlorinated water. You also have to dechlorinate that using dechlor tabs. So I want to have that window to be able to watch the weather to not cause any further issues. At some point, we are going to have to flush those hydrants. Whether, if weather is a concern, we can put down sand. But ideally, looking at the weather, if we're going to have forty-degree days compared to twenty-degree days, we want to be conscious of that. Also, public notification. We'll do web notices. One of the things I've been looking at is the sign boards. I know we had a sign board in the Lee's Pond area, talking about the drought conditions. And there's also been some lights out on that sign board. So I had that sign board removed today so that we can address any maintenance that needs to be done with that sign board and also to get the message out there before we're going to do that. So I believe the Lee's Pond area will be a good area to have that done. If we have further issues with that sign board displaying a clear message, we can look into getting the one that's at Capron Park right now and we can do a shuffle there. But I'd like to have that in place at least a week to a week and a half beforehand to get the message out there to residents in South Attleboro. So basically, it's a final punch list there. We need the DEP to do an inspection. We need the Fire Department to do an inspection. We have chemical in the tanks. It's a, the water's already finished. So we're just fine tuning the pH and adding further corrosion control. So it's already treated water. We're just kind of fine tuning it to meet Attleboro's parameters. But we've, we're pretty much at the end stages of that. Moving on to Waiting River, it's referred to as the pilot facility, the temporary facility. That is also about three weeks away. We have the seventeenth and the eighteenth targeted dates for that. So we have a media that needs to be put into vessels right now. Once that media is put into vessels and it's added in a slurry, meaning that that media is added with water to those vessels. Once there is water put to those vessels, that media needs to stay wet. So once we start this process, we need to stick with this process. Otherwise, you would have to run it in a closed loop, meaning not out to the system. One of the things to keep in mind with this pilot facility is, right now, the Waiting River facility that's online is doing approximately one and a half million gallons a day. We will be able to pump no more than one million gallons a day out of that pilot facility. Once we go to the permanent facility, we can get closer to the two million gallons. But we are a couple of years away from that. So that's one thing to be mindful of. That once we go into this pilot facility that will treat the PFAS, you're going back to a million gallons a day at that point. So we're losing essentially five hundred thousand gallons a day. Going forward, I'm very conscious of paying money to other communities. We, I've mentioned this previous, but we appreciate everything that Mansfield's done for us. We appreciate everything that Pawtucket is going to do for us. But I'm mindful that those should be emergency connections. The Pawtucket connection was intended as an emergency connection. I'd like to test it most likely at a equivalent to, same thing with Pawtucket, sorry to jump around. Pawtucket were approved for a million gallons a day as well. I don't want to just start at that flow of a million gallons a day because that's going to disrupt the system even further. I'd like to start out with the Pawtucket around a half a million gallons a day. Slowly work our way up and then work our way down, just to know everything responds as it should and then shut it down. We might have to revisit things down the line, but that, that would be my intention. To know that everything works as it should. We might have to revisit that in warmer weather when the demand increases. Like I said, sorry to jump around. I'll get back to the Mansfield. So speaking to other communities with the water, like I said, we would, we appreciate what Mansfield's done. But we don't, with our watershed, we want to recuperate. We have a great watershed with abundant areas that we have water. So I would like to utilize that and not be paying the other communities. Granted, we have some recovering to do with Manchester. But with our ozone system that I'll speak to a little further on down the line, we'll be able to stay on Oars Pond longer. Back to the, so essentially, I would like to shut down that hydrant-to-hydrant connection with Mansfield. And that would probably coincide with the Pawtucket facility coming online. We're doing just under two hundred thousand gallons a day through that hydrant-to-hydrant connection with Mansfield. There would be plans to do an in-ground connection, like I said, to be used for emergency purposes. The Waiting River Permanent Facility. All requested documentation has been provided to SRF. We're awaiting approval from state to publicly advertise and bid. And Tater and Howard is assisting with that loan application. All of our water main projects that I can speak to, Globe Street is finished. That was a six-inch main that was put in the Globe Street. The water is on there. Come springtime, we'll have to lower those gate boxes slightly that are on that road. Yards will still need to be touched up and paving will need to take place in the spring. Lindsay Street is all done. There is a drain pipe issue out there that is going to have to be looked into, as it's already being looked into. Hydrants are going to need to be painted in the spring as well as hydrant flags put up and spring paving on Lindsay Street as well. Bishop Street, we have a meeting scheduled for February sixth. And that's a full replacement of a twelve-inch main in the spring. But the meeting for that will take place first week of February. Just speaking to some other side notes, all the vehicles that are, have open purchase orders for, those vehicles, we're all, we're waiting for those right now. They've, they've all been ordered, some of them on various things that we're waiting for. Some as simple as strobe lights being installed. Two of the trucks need strobe lights installed. The other two need body assembly. The trucks with the strobe lights have been moved to the top of the list, but we're anticipating those being ready. The ten-wheeler, that is... We are supposed to check back on that in the middle of March, but that should be ready for the spring, the ten-wheeler, the Peterbilt. Other side notes, we're waiting on the report that was done by TRC for dredging of Oars Pond. We should get that report back anytime. And as far as the West Street piloting for PFAS and for manganese removal, we're reviewing proposals. There was three companies that submitted proposals. We narrowed it down to two proposals, but one of them didn't really have a detailed piloting process, financially detailed. So we requested more information financially on the piloting process. They have sent, submitted that back to us and I'll be reviewing those final two proposals with a consultant that we have hired on. And I'll be doing that this week. Ozone equipment, which is a very important piece of equipment for us, that is onsite. So it has been delivered. We'll be awarding that bid very shortly. It's, that's in the process of awarding that bid. This is a very important piece of equipment for us because, as I mentioned earlier, Oars Pond and most of you councilors have already heard a lot of this stuff, but Oars Pond spikes manganese in June or July, which is typically when we switch to Manchester reservoir. This ozone system will allow us to stay on Oars Pond longer so that we don't have to switch to Manchester. And in assisting with our watershed and tying in to the manganese removal, we can bring down water from Hopping Hill to either replenish Luther Dam that can then get pumped up to Manchester reservoir. Or by staying on Oars Pond longer and not switching to Manchester, we will draw down Oars Pond. We can also bring that water down from Hopping Hill and not pump it up to Manchester and let it spill over the dam or through valves. We can send it down to Oars Pond if that's where the need comes to have to stay on Oars Pond longer. We can, if Manchester's in a good place at that time, we can bring the water down to Oars. But like I said, not to keep jumping around, but I think people are starting to get the grasp. And I'd like to explain that everything is so interconnected that one piece of this has an effect on the whole chain of events, just like the ozone system, just like reducing the flow going on to the PFAS facility at Waiting River. I'll have a plan in place. I can't predict what the rain's going to be. But I'll have a plan in place and we will get where we need to be. But just because we test Pawtucket and then shut it down, doesn't mean we might not have to revisit that. I don't want to just say this is the way it's going to go and have that be concrete. We are going to have to, I don't necessarily worry about the reduction in flow with Waiting River right now. But that five hundred thousand gallons a day that we're not able to pump come June, July, or August will have an effect. So that, that's why I just want to be clear that ideally, we don't want to be spending money to other communities for water. And it's definitely more reasonable to get water from Pawtucket and we're able to get more of it. So I just want to make it clear that the plan is to shut down the hydrant-to-hydrant to test the Pawtucket interconnection. But ideally, I would like to treat that as intended, as an emergency source and watch us build back our watershed through our means.
Can I just add some financial stuff before?
Absolutely. Of course.
A couple of important, so, thank you, Matt. So in, in talking with Matt over the last couple of weeks, we, particularly, no, I want to clarify a couple of things for the council. The installation of the ozone equipment bid that's being awarded, it's because the bid is basically bifurcated. The installation of the ozone equipment bid that's being awarded, it's because the bid is basically bifurcated. The equipment is onsite, the installation bid is what is about to be awarded, and that paperwork is being reviewed through the legal process right now. There were some, uh, previous concerns on my part of, did we have sufficient funds for that project? I believe we're good for that particular project. Something of, very important, that the council needs to be made aware of, and I'm gonna tell you today, and I think it's more likely than not coming before the council next week, is the increased cost related to the permanent PFAS, uh, facility. The original council authorization for that was thirty-five million, thirty-five million one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. That was in May of twenty twenty-four. Just before Mason, um, left for military leave in October, there was a meeting that, um, the folks at the time, including myself and Mason and, uh, water personnel, didn't include Matt. There were some discussions, um, with the city treasurer and other folks, as it related to increased costs related to that facility, and what the forecasts would be going over the the build. We were maybe going to have to come back to the council for, you know, we we were thinking maybe on the order of thirty-nine million, forty million. We don't really know, to be honest with you. The most recent estimates, because it would include the, um, potentially for infrastructure, a portion of it is slated to be funded through federal, S R, federal funds through the state SRF program. That, um, adds an additional layer of Buy America and Build America, the BABA funds, right? No idea what the impact to the bid would potentially be. The most recent discussions that we have had as a finance team, which included some, uh, which includes the city treasurer, the ma, the mayor was at the meeting, you know, uh, engineering folks, um, all sorts of people. And we're at the fifty million point right now. So the, we're not sure it's going to get that high, but because we don't know where we're going to land in the bid, the most recent recommendation that we came to, I want to say Thursday of last week, was we should return to the council and ask for the increased authorization to go from thirty-five million one eighty-one to fifty million dollars. It puts us potentially in the best position possible to pivot and move forward with SRF funding, if that's the way to go. So simultaneous with the ask to the council, which should be coming to you Tuesday, the draft authorization from bond council was reviewed and came back today. So that, uh, that increase in the loan authorization will be coming on Tuesday, I believe the mayor will put it in her communication of next week. And then that that has, that loan authorization goes through the same process as a regular loan authorization. It's the first time in my experience with the city that we're doing an amendment to an existing loan authorization. So I'm, I asked the city treasurer, I'm like, how does it actually work? And the process is basically exactly the same, the public notice, the notification, the advertisement, the, um, all of those nuances that are involved. The loan authorization, I believe, is going to come down as a not-to-exceed amount of the fifty million dollars. Obviously, um, that's the number that is being presented, because we didn't want to settle at forty-two million, and then the bids come in at forty-three, and we have to start all over. The complexities of funding through the SRF and tranches of money come out at particularly year, like, timeframes. So right now, funding through the, um, state revolving fund program, what we're trying to determine, and our, our, the city's financial advisor with, um, UFASI, Unibank, is we're looking at, you know, is is that the best approach still, right? Is the, is the complexity of adding the, uh, infrastructure mandate from the feds, is the principle forgiveness? Does, do the numbers still make sense? Regardless of where we land on the bid piece, we know we need more than we have available to sign a contract right now. So that's why the fifty million would be coming down next week. I thought it was important to mention that today, because if we're here today talking about water, and seven days from now, you get a request for loan authorization, and you're like, where were they last week, right? I mean, this is, this is quickly happening. The bid that Matt had talked about, we don't have, as I understand it, sitting here right this minute, we don't have permission to even put the bid out on the street, because the state mandates certain things have to happen before that can go out. I can tell you that I'm prohibited by our charter from signing a contract until thirty days after the loan authorization. And so timing, time is of the essence whenever it comes to bids and contracts and that kind of stuff, particularly in the construction world. And that's why the loan authorization is expected to come down Tuesday of next week. That's the biggest thing as it relates to finance, I mean, that's a huge, that piece alone, then the complexities of where do we really go for the borrowing, will it be SRF? Will it be in the private market? That's all discussion stuff that would happen with the treasurer, finance. But the first piece is, no matter where we borrow it from, we have to have the authorization to borrow it. So that's the first piece that will be coming back to the council. One of, uh, Councilor Foy, you had asked last week about, um, the Mansfield. I think that question has been answered, but one of the other pieces that I think the council should know today, we received today the first actual invoice, so to speak, from Mansfield, and we enjoy a ten percent discount. So the number you got last week of two oh seven is actually a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and that will bring us for, um, those billings are through the water meter read of, uh, January twenty-fourth. So as of four days ago, and after talking to the billing department in Mansfield today, it is our expectation that we will be billed once monthly in arrears for the previous thirty days. If we come offline with them in the early part of February, obviously, the billing cycle would remain the same, it would obviously just be a smaller amount. So that's where we are with that particular, um, piece of information. Matt touched on a lot of the projects, I did share with you a spreadsheet. What I I tried to do, um, for him and with him over the last couple of days in particular, was lay out everything that I know financially is happening in the water department, from the perspective of capital projects, ARPA funds, whether it's city ARPA funds or Bristol County ARPA funds, and kind of get that into like a one-page tiny print synopsis, so that we could work on buttoning some things up, closing some things up before fiscal year end. You know, we had shifted Globe Street from a capital project over to an ARPA project. Matt shared that that's almost done, there's, there's paperwork, um, that we're both kind of, does anybody have this piece of paper, we're both looking for it? You know, it might not have been something that should be in my office, it might have been something that was with, uh, a previous superintendent or assistant superintendent, or it might have been typically, Mason was the point person. So we're navigating that as best we can. This summary that I provided to you is sort of like the work in progress of where we are right now, with the best information we have as of today, trying to map some things out, and obviously, in that discussion, and the more I learn about the watershed, the water system, and that kind of stuff, the, um, the discussion with the administration and the superintendent was, you know, you need to know, right, about the plan for Pawtucket coming online. And, you know, people need to understand that if there's the flushing, like, what, that's gonna be a question, why are they flushing? Well, when I, when I learn more about it, well, Deb, if you don't, with the direction of water, this is what happens, right? So it it all starts to make more sense to me. I'm happy to answer any of the finance questions that you may have for me. Some of them, I might have to tell you that I'll have to get back to you, because some of the stuff is stuff that might normally fall under somebody else, but we'll do the best that we can to answer anything, so.
As far as, I know, um, I don't think I have any finance questions, but I have a couple of questions for Matt. When it comes to Pawtucket, once we're online and active, is it, is it easy per se to shut off and turn on?
Yes, um...
Like, is it a flip of a switch, or is it a big, huge?
Essentially, it's valves and and pumps just being shut off. So it's, it's a fairly, fairly simple process. We are required to run that one week per year.
Oh, okay.
So, we would, we would have to, that's why I'm kind of of the mindset, I I don't want to just start it at a million gallons a day, because it's just gonna, it's, it's, I don't want it to disrupt the system any more than it has to. And I think we should gradually go up and gradually go down, and then just know everything works and responds as it should, fine-tune everything, and then shut it down until there's a, there's a need there, treat it as an emergency connection.
And so if we're required one pe, one week per year, d, are there any gallons associated with that, that we're required to use in that one week?
Yeah, I, they don't have a number on it, but I I believe it's just that we have to run it a week a year. And there'll be other testing, as far as with the pumps, you're not gonna want to let the pumps just sit over time, but we can do that in a closed loop, where it won't be going out to the system. Essentially, you could do it through a hydrant, or there is just piping where it's looped, where you could just test the equipment without going out to the system.
Okay, and let me see what else I have for questions. And so with the ozone equipment onsite, what are we, what are we looking at for? Uh, I know you're awarding the bid for the construction, what are we looking at, so, for completion?
Originally, I was hearing, um, installation timelines of around three months, and that's why I say everything is so closely intertwined, because three months is getting you close to that point where we start to have manganese issues. So I'll look at all situations and 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 come up with the appropriate responses to those and and have a very detailed plan going forward based on if this happens, if that happens. But ideally, we want to have that installed for when we start to see those manganese levels increase, which would be June and July.
Okay, and then, um, for, when we go online with Pawtucket and the disruption for South Atabro residents, when you talk about disruption, will it be lack of water, will it be brown water, will it be?
It'd be discoloration, because essentially, just like you would see with a water main break or anything like that, you have iron and manganese, naturally occurring minerals, that cake on the inside of a water main, for lack of a better explanation. And then, once you have that change in flow, whether it be going different directions, whether it be any disruption like that, that mineral is gonna break off and to go into solution. So the manganese would be the black specks, the, um, iron would be what you would see something looking like a rust color. So we would want to, um, we would want to mitigate that as much as possible, which the hydrant flushing would be the way to go. And granted, it's, it's not ideal to be doing this in January, February, but we need to know that all this equipment works correctly, and like I said, we, having that window, barring any setbacks, it would be, we'd want to watch the weather to, to look for that forty-degree day or...
Okay, thank you, uh, I'll open it up for questions if anybody has any. Counselor Lavoy first.
Thank you, um, regarding the projects that are completed or wrapping up, is everything on budget? I know most are on time, but everything's on budget for now?
So, I'm, I'm gonna answer the question this way, and let me know if this answers the question. They can't, these projects that are listed on my sheet, you can't go over budget. The only thing that I'm aware of that's pending right now, that doesn't show on here, because it's something that's, um, hasn't made into the MUNIS software system, is I am aware of a nine-thousand-dollar change order that's happening for Globe Street that has to do with linear piping and stuff like that, that is paperwork that I know about. So, and, you know, I have a thirty-five million dollar authorization, and I think I need fifty, so on-budget is a relative term, right? I mean, from what we know right now, there is no expectation. I can tell you a week ago, I was worried about the ozone, because I'm aware of what the bid was. What I didn't understand when I had the bid number is that inside that bid is, um, an assignment to the piece of equipment that's already onsite. So the contract for that particular project that is just starting circulation with legal is a complex contract that needs to make its way through, and it is obviously because it's water and it's ozone, and it would impact the ability to use Oars Pond, it's a high priority item that is being, like, marshaled through the administrative process with legal and all the offices that have to touch something like that. There are some projects here that I'm hopeful that some money will be returned to the, um, Water Enterprise Fund's bottom line. Some of that would be ARPA money through Bristol County that the general entries haven't been done. This also, the actions taken earlier this year, fiscal year by the council provided five hundred thousand dollars relief to the Water Enterprise Fund. That five hundred thousand dollars worth of relief through salary has already been moved over to ARPA funds, so that has happened. There are small project pieces here that, um, depending on when the money came in and what the source of the money is, it's, the use of that is restricted to similar economic way. So if the money came from Enterprise Fund retained earnings, it's available for any lawful purpose. But if the original origin of the money was, um, installation of a water main, and you didn't need it for a subsequent water main, that money can't just revert to the Enterprise Fund, so we're mapping some of that stuff out. So right now, the answer is yes, everything's under budget, but that presumes everything has been reported to my office.
Fair enough, it's a very good answer, and I was more so looking to the change order, so that's perfect. And definitely did not have the thirty-five million jump in my answer, I understand that is not...
Right, yeah, no, I appreciate that, I just, you know what I mean, like...
Yeah, I appreciate it, very good answer, of course. But, uh, and then my question to Matt would be, um, so it seems like Matt's still gonna come offline, are we projecting the purchase from Pawtucket for a bit, or just kind of phasing out that water push? Because I'm just, I guess, most of us would be hopeful that maybe we can potentially put some of that five hundred thousand back into the Enterprise Fund, or whichever.
So, if I can just address what you had spoke to previously, that that change order was, I believe, to, um, it was some footage added to that six-inch water main to address the, um, piping for the fire hydrant on there. So that's what that nine-thousand-dollar change order was to address that. With Mansfield, with Wading River, uh, right, rather, Mansfield, the hydrant-to-hydrant, you were saying for that to, that coming offline?
Correct, so, uh, you mentioned pulling off Mansfield when Pawtucket comes online.
Correct.
Are we planning to buy from Pawtucket for duration, or are we just hoping to get the system in check, and then potentially rely on Atabro water and stop purchasing water?
I think ideally, we don't buy water, water from other communities. And I think what I mentioned earlier was testing it and then shutting it down, treating it as the emergency connection it was intended for. But that's easy to say now, we might have to revisit that based on demand come June, July, around that time. So I think ideally, we shut it down and, um, just treat it as an emergency connection.
That sounds great, thank you.
If, if I could just elaborate on that one thing, um, there, there's no reason to purchase water from Pawtucket if Oars Pond is at a strong level, we're three inches down there right now. As long as you have that water directly in front of the treatment plant, there's no reason to be purchasing water. If we start to see that level drop down, that's when we might have to revisit it. But that's also what ozone is gonna help with, you know, we'll, we'll be able to treat manganese spikes at Oars Pond. And if we do, like I said, if we start to drain down Oars Pond based on staying on it and not running Pawtucket, we can bring that water from Hopping Hill down to replenish. But that, that's, the ozone system is crucial with us not having to switch over to Manchester early on. Thank you.
Councilor Foy?
Thank you. I had two questions, one was, um, this disruption you're talking about, is this a one-day, two-day, one-week? How long is this disruption that you anticipate when Pawtucket gets, uh, tested?
It's tough to really put a timeframe on it, because as I said, the waters traveled one way for a hundred years. So there was hydrant flushing done in South Atabro, I believe it was two years ago. So a lot of South Atabro was addressed through the hydrant flushing program. But you're still gonna have that iron and manganese on those mains. And I think starting at that lower flow and working your way up, um, will help keep that at a minimum. But due to the temperatures, and we're, we're gonna try and mitigate the, the discolorate water with, with the flushing... But due to the temperatures and we're going to try and mitigate the discolored water with the flushing. But to an extent, you're going to, you're going to have the discolored water. But it's just going to be a matter of, I couldn't put a timeframe on it. And that's why I think starting at the low flows and ramping up and treating this as, you know, checking all the equipment, knowing everything works correctly and then shutting it down. But you are going to have discoloration because of reversing the flow, but I wouldn't be able to put a timeframe on it.
So it might be a matter of weeks?
Not if we're only going to run it the one week. Or if we run it a couple of weeks, I don't anticipate it having dirty water the whole time.
Okay.
But in some areas, you're going to have dead end areas where it's tougher to have that circulate and to flush that, you know. But we will do everything in our power as a department to mitigate it in any way we can. And whether that's, you know, residents reaching out, obviously right off the bat. And with the temperatures, it does restrict us a little bit. But we want to be conscious of the impact that this does have on residents.
That gives me an order of magnitude. Thank you. My second question, and I don't know to whom to address it, is this additional infrastructure requirement of the federal mandate that you mentioned, what is it? What are we talking about?
Percentage wise?
No, what is the infrastructure? So? I thought we were building a PFAS facility. Now there's some additional infrastructure?
So?
It's not additional.
Infrastructure Act.
It's not additional infrastructure. The BABA Act would, basically, you would have to get this equipment in the United States. And some of this, which poses some challenges, I know with the high school, they dealt with similar things, even though the steel was produced in the US, it was taken a route through Canada. So certain things like that is, and we don't know exactly what the number is going to be. We've heard numbers of twenty five percent, but that's really just, you know, someone giving their opinion. So it could affect certain pieces of equipment.
Now I understand. So this is, this is to get some federal money, we have to buy American, is that, is that?
Bipartisan infrastructure legislation, which was out, I think, maybe twenty-two in twenty-two, has a component that there's certain, certain infrastructure components. It could be steel. I don't know every
Understood.
specific component. And because of those and the requirement to buy American, now within my understanding, limited as it is in talking to the engineering firm, like there's still like pieces, it might be the media, it might be components of this, this overall entity facility that we're building, that that widget doesn't, it's not available in the United States. So you would have to seek an exemption or a waiver for a particular item.
Understood.
If it weren't for the fact that SRF was using federal as part of this tranche of money, we would not be, we would not have to be BABA compliant, is my understanding. Where this all lands, still kind of, I'm not sure where it's going to land, to be honest with you. So many things right today are changing. I did, I specifically asked if this was an executive order or if this originated with legislation and I was told it was bipartisan legislation, have since looked at a couple of things. So I expect that to stay. I don't really know.
If I could just elaborate, it poses challenges on the engineers because there's only some pieces of equipment, there's only one manufacturer of it or limited manufacturer. So it definitely, it definitely puts, the engineers are going to have to put some time and really research and get creative on finding this equipment at a reasonable cost. But like I said, some, some of these pieces of equipment are limited on the amount of people that manufacture them.
Thank you. Counsel Kovaas?
Thank you. First of all, Matt, welcome and it's great to see you sitting in that chair. One of the things I wanted to mention is that a number of years ago, when we were investigating the Tory Street gas leak, investigating the mayor and the former water superintendent, one of the names that we kept hearing about is somebody with strong values and a moral compass and integrity was your name. So it's great to see you sitting here and welcome. And so speaking of that, in understanding some of the challenges within the department, want to know if you feel sort of empowered by the administration to sort of make some of the changes within the department for morale and psychological safety within the department and some of those types of projects that maybe need to happen?
Counsel Kovaas, if I could just interrupt you. So we're talking about the water situation and, you know, the projects that are going on. Did you have a finance or a project question?
I have two other questions. Sure. So with the water, do we have a total dollar amount that we've spent on purchasing water from Mansfield? What is that amount?
Around a hundred ninety-eight thousand.
One ninety-eight. And we didn't, is it correct that we did not budget for that?
Initially, we did not. So this is the hundred ninety-eight thousand, today's bills that came through today, which cover consumption through January twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five. It's one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven oh seven eighty-one, which is slightly less than the number you got last week because when the invoice came through, the number didn't match. I called Mansfield and they said, you get a discount. They have certain, I don't have it with me because frankly, it was a surprise to me. There are some, their billing structure is different and there was a discount, we're going to endure the benefit, maybe because we're
Right, when I saw that number last week, it seemed low or it didn't seem, or anyway.
So it's a hundred ninety-eight thousand for the read through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Today's, you know, three days ago. So that's the, as current a bill and that includes both from the start date in November. No, we did not budget for this. We did budget fifteen thousand dollars
For Pawtucket.
For Pawtucket because we always anticipated Pawtucket coming online.
Yep.
And there's two agreements that govern both Pawtucket and Mansfield, intermunicipal agreements.
And I remember that.
What we did subsequent, sir, was the, we came back before you and said, give us permission to use ARPA funds, to commit the ARPA funds honor before the deadline, city ARPA funds of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We did that and we, we were allowed to use those funds to shift, for lack of a better term, expenses, personnel expenses of the water department to that grant funding source of ARPA. By doing that, it freed up a half a million dollars of personnel budget in the Water Enterprise Fund. Then we came back to the council and said, now that the transactions, you approved the first transaction, we've, accounting has moved those expenses, please transfer through a council vote, four hundred thousand dollars to Mansfield Water, one hundred thousand dollars to Pawtucket Water. That's what happened last week in a council vote. The budget transfers happened. The water department put the purchase what is in so that we could process the payment to Mansfield and we received the invoices today. So it's my expectation that schedules will be submitted to the accounting office. We will pay these two bills and we, if this was it, let's say this was it, no more bills to come in. And we know that's not the case, but if that were the case, the five hundred thousand dollars that was, that's now in those two accounts, four hundred thousand for Mansfield, one hundred thousand for Pawtucket. If we never accessed any more of that and left, spent the two hundred, the hundred ninety-eight, let's call it two hundred thousand, we'd have three hundred thousand dollars. That three hundred thousand dollars, in theory, unless additional action was taken by the council, would flow through to retained earnings of the water department, provided all other things are equal. And by all other things equal, I mean that we came exactly on the revenue target and expensed every other cent on the expenditure.
And so therefore, so you're telling me, we don't have concerns about the water department's budget as a result of purchasing this additional water from Mansfield because of those changes, essentially?
So right now, five hundred thousand dollars of budget relief on the salary side and two hundred thousand dollars of expenses, that sort of has resolved it. What, what the analysis has yet to be done is, you know, we're still, the consumer in Attleboro, whether Attleboro residents, businesses, they're still being billed for water, right? Whether the, whether the supply of water is, you know, from the rain, from a reservoir, from Mansfield, from Pawtucket, we're still, we're still going to bill our consumers for water, right? So the revenue streams right now, I have not done a detailed analysis of it, but when I printed the report to have a discussion with that, I was actually pretty surprised, right? With the revenues that were coming in on the water side. We did experience a rate increase, right? Like it's the elephant in the room, a part of the conversation that I'm sure is going to be discussed, right? There was the rate increase, there's that. And the, and the expenditure side, Matt and I met the other day, I'm like, you need to really go through your expense side too. We need to see like, where are we? Are we using less chemical, right? Are we using more of other resources? Pawtucket, I don't know how well budgeted the expenses related to operating Pawtucket, if that became long term. Those aren't in the budget.
But ultimately, in, from a resident's perspective, in legally, I don't think we're allowed to increase the water rate once we set it at the beginning of the year. But if we ran out of money because all of a sudden we ran out of water and had to buy a bunch of water, we don't now have to increase the water rates because of this situation mid-year or something like that because we're covered is what I'm getting at, correct?
So I more clearly understand the question. The half a million dollar shift, right now, I think, covers, yeah. Right now, the water department technically also has retained earnings that if necessary, we could tap into that. Part of the reason the analysis of capital projects was done is if, if capital project was previously funded with retained earnings and the project is complete, retained earnings of the water department could be used for any lawful purpose, i.e. purchasing water if we needed it.
Perfect.
Right this minute, I didn't print the reports, Counsel Kovaas, and I didn't go into panic, right? I actually thought, it's not as bad as I thought it would be, right?
Right, right.
But that's all things
When I looked at, that's sort of where I ended up as well.
Yeah, when I looked at it, I thought to myself, and I'm not, I wasn't looking at the expense side, I was looking at the revenue side. From the revenue side, we're halfway through the year, we're about halfway on target, you know. You know, and this is a year that you did have water restrictions, right? Water restrictions matter, that people potentially are consuming less, right? So.
I mean, it's not a good thing, but it's not as
None of it's ideal, but I don't think it's as bad. And let's, we're grateful that we had the ARPA funds, right?
Yes.
It allowed us to pivot, it allowed us to access money for something that, you know, the community needed. I don't know, I don't know the answer and I have not looked about a media increase. I'm not advocating for that. I don't think that's what you're asking for. I think that's a different question. I'm not there. I think there'd be all sorts of other things that, not that I would necessarily be in favor.
I wasn't suggesting that.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that, I think before we ever get to that point, there'd be lots of other discussions, difficult discussions that we would have. But right this minute, I'm not panicked on that side.
Perfect.
Maybe I should be, but I'm not.
Thank you.
Just elaborate on that. And that's one of the reasons why I anticipate shutting down the Mansfield connection. Because I think it's a time to be fiscally responsible. And I think if you can get water cheaper through Pawtucket, that's a move we make. I don't look at things as, you know, I'm acting superintendent of the water department, you know, would it make my life easier to just get water from everywhere? It would be more sleep at night probably, but I don't put myself in the position of just a water superintendent. I put myself mindful of residents, mindful of the community and mindful of the department. But that's why I think you make that, that change when Pawtucket's available with that in mind. That if, if there's money to be saved, we want to save.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, Counsel Reynolds?
So I don't have a question, but I'd just like to say first, Matt, congratulations. I've known Matt a really, really long time. And so I'm acutely aware of his honesty and his integrity. And I want to say that the quality of your work ethic, Matt, and the number of years you've put into this department have brought you to this acting superintendent job. And there isn't a doubt in my mind that you will bring this department to the excellence it deserves. And I'm, I'm really proud of you. I think you're going to do a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And if I can just respond to that and say, you know, I haven't taken any shortcuts to get here. I'm here now and this isn't just a thirty-five hour a week job to me. If, you know, and I think we've taken some hits here. But to get back on topic, you know, if you were looking for a thirty-five hour over week person that's just going to do the job and go home, I'm not that person. And like I said, I take a lot of pride in this, I take a lot of passion in it. I don't want to just be a superintendent of a water department. I want to be a superintendent of the water department that I'm a part of a community.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Counsel Lavoy?
Thank you. I will just echo your first statement there. You know, from a lifelong resident as well and a consumer, I feel a lot more trusting in the department today than I did previously before any incident happened. With that being said, I had a brief question on the budget side. If hypothetically, we kick back two hundred thousand or something like that, when we move those funds back, are those able to be allocated to the consult group down the road if we, you know?
So I missed something you said, but let's start with the funds allocated, kicked back. I'm confused.
So like, if we don't spend all five hundred thousand and they go back into, you know, retained earnings within the department, are we able to use those to pay the consult firm if we need them longer, if we don't have a successful bid?
I'm sorry, the consult firm. So if that money flowed back into water department retained earnings after certification, you could use that for that purpose, if that's what you're You would have the ability through the budget process to make a recommendation to the administration to use those funds. While the council has the power of the purse, you don't have the authority to make the appropriation unless it comes from the council, excuse me, from the administration downstairs. But you certainly would have the authority to make a recommendation to reserve that, to use that for a different purpose. The key there is it would have to be certified. So anything that falls through to retained earnings, books close June thirtieth, fifteen day payable period, balance sheet submission to the state, you'd be looking at the fall. If the half a million dollars was not all expended, let's say that was the two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars left over, the council could, before June thirtieth, make a recommendation to set that money aside for something, appropriate it now for a particular purpose, and then we would encumber those funds after that. You'd have to make the recommendation the mayor would come down. I think that would be a collaboration with the administration to move that and secure it. Because once the books close at midnight and retained earnings sort of goes away until the new certification, that's the gap of like time where you don't have access to that money.
Thank you. I was just curious in terms of if we didn't have a successful bid for a new superintendent and we needed to keep the firm on a little longer instead of spending, you know, city cash on hand, like the eighty thousand, I believe it was before, you know, if we were able to prepare longer.
That was the exact same thing, sir. You use the retained earnings to fund the eighty-five thousand dollars. It would essentially be the same thing. That contract goes through June thirtieth, I believe. And part of the discussion with the administration, when Mayor G. Simone was saying about moving the eighty-five thousand, I said, you can do that if you have the cutoff. If we don't have anything, we would have to include something in the next budget cycle. Alternatively, you could do exactly what you just suggested. Make the suggestion and say, hey, can we use some portion of what we didn't use for that and set it aside? Get that tied up in a contract.
Awesome. Thank you.
President Dullesio?
Thank you. Acting Superintendent Karanti, thank you for coming down. I think, first of all, I want to thank you for stepping up in a time where really the city needed you too. I think there's a lot going on. Audit of Gould, I appreciate you coming down today as always. Thank you for answering my questions over the last several weeks at least. I know there's a lot. I think what's important to note is a lot of what's going on tonight and what we're talking about is different than, as Matt alluded to, the elephant in the room. It seems to be a couple of things going on that you're facing an aging infrastructure compiled with always increasing state and federal. compiled with always increasing state and federal mandates. I think PFAS with that goal line always changing is, is challenging. One thing I'll say, I think is a, a, a godsend, for lack of a better word, is our forefathers had great insight to really build one of the biggest and strongest watersheds in Massachusetts, if not in this area, and I think that that's helping us to get through this a little bit more. Also, as, as Council Reynolds said, I've known you quite a while, I know exactly what you're going to bring to the department. Um, I have a feeling we'll see you a few more times between now and probably the end of the fiscal year. Did a really nice job facing us this evening, it can't be easy. The question I had is, um, a lot of my questions were answered, but over the last several weeks, we've seen a good amount of precipitation. Um, you said it was, pond is down three inches still?
Correct.
Have we been able to see a resurgence in the water levels at Manchester? And with, you know, we have anywhere from what I'm seeing from three to six inches of precipitation over the next four to five days, what impact will that have?
So, we're at 139.2 at Manchester right now, so we've come up quite a bit. We are still in looking at years where we faced challenges in the past, we're still below that. We're probably three, three feet below, you know, some of those years where we also faced challenges, so we do have, you know, some ground to make up, but the way it works, we're continuing to pump up to Manchester. So, um, when we got that four inches of rain a month or so ago, it really gave us a push in the right direction. Unfortunately, we haven't had much since then, but what we continue to do is, um, any precipitation that we get, or Luther Dam, we're basically pumping down that water and pumping it up to Manchester until we get to a certain point, letting that kind of refill and continuing to pump. But, um, without opening Hop and Hill or having steady rain, granted, we get steady rain, those pumps are going on, and we're continuing to pump, but the only way for Manchester to fill is either by rain or us by pumping up from Luther Dam, but any chance that Luther gets a little bit of recovery, those pumps are going on and we're filling up.
Right, thank you, and best luck to you.
I appreciate everything.
Everybody outside? Nobody has any more questions?
Okay, thank you both so much for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
I could just say, with, I just want to thank the staff and Deb, everybody that's been so great throughout this process in helping me get where I need to be, and I still have a ways to go with learning procedures, but Deb's been a huge help, and, and people that have volunteered their services, I just want to say thank you to those people.
We've heard that about Deb before.
We know Deb, she's the great.
Let's, let's be honest, it's easy to help somebody who's willing to put in the work that he does, right?
That's great.
It hasn't gone unnoticed by colleagues.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you both, thank you.
Appreciate everything.
So I have four motions tonight from the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $1,830.93 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account animal control HVAC services for the animal shelter HVAC repairs.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so I guess something's going on with the motherboards over there, and they need to have it fixed, they're having trouble controlling the heat in AC. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to appropriate $144,181.61 from account wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to wastewater enterprise fund lights and power to replenish funds used on an emergency repair.
Second.
Thank you. So this was, um, the emergency was, repair was, they had to do some excavation at the, in the phase three landfill, so luckily, the excavator was already on site, but obviously, they still have to pay them. So, um, they had take, they had considered emergency, taken it from lights and power, and they just want to replenish the lights and plot, power back. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to appropriate $9,620 from account wastewater enterprise fund retained earnings to account wastewater enterprise fund professional services to cover the repair costs of five cranes.
Second.
Thank you. So these cranes, they're overhead cranes that they use in the plant, and they were installed in 1978. So they, they have to be certified as far as safety goes, so they're, they're having a little bit of, you know, some issues that they need to repair to, uh, you know, get back up to the certification so they can all be used. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $48,329.40 from account wastewater enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account wastewater enterprise fund plant improvements to purchase fi, parts for the mechanical bar screen at Headworks.
Second.
Thank you. So these are screens that screen out the solids, um, at, at the beginning of the plant, and they run 24/7, uh, around the clock, so we need to do some maintenance on them to get them up to par. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And that's all the business I have, I'd like to call for an adjournment at 7:36.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Do you mind canceling?
I'd like to cancel ordinance election legislative matters committee this evening.
Thank you. Don't meet here, Todd?
Todd?
Yep, the Transportation and Traffic Committee has no business today, so we'll meet at the next appropriate time.
Counselor.
I call the zoning and land use and sustainability committees in order, and members of the committee include myself, Laura Doolan, and Nick LaVoy, and I actually wanted to make a small comment, just because we recently voted on the committee's name to be changed to zoning land use and sustainability, and I wanted to highlight what sustainability means so that we can look at that. Webster's dictionary definition is relating to or being a method of harvesting or using a resource so that the resource is not depleted or permanently damaged. To use or consume only what can be replenished, if you use or consume more than you can be replenished, it's not sustainable. Lessons learned from my parents is to not live beyond your means, and we can all relate to that. We can apply this to water security, development, pollution, CO2 footprint, waste, budgeting, and more. The UN defines sustainability as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. In other words, it's good to work for the common good now and in the future, not just for our self-interest. While sustainability can and is part of each council committee, it belongs chiefly in the zoning and land use because zoning and land use are where the mechanisms, the rules and regulations of sustainable development and growth reside. I wanted to bring this to the forefront of our minds while considering and voting for items in our committee. I want to move on to the, um, one motion that I can bring out is from the docket of October 1st, 2024, rezoning application from Diane Rose, 1290 County Street for Assessor's Clat number 148, Lot 4, to change from single residence D to general residence C.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order, and this person is on their own property, and it's to, um, create a special permit for a person to make another additional, um, building on their property. And, um, for, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. I don't know how to handle the, the next one because I need to.
I believe you and Vice President Dolan need to recuse, at which point, Council of Avis will take over the rest of the committee meeting.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, as the last member on the committee, I will be.
One moment, you must wait until they leave the chambers, thank you.
For a point of clarification, just as the last member on the committee, I'll be heading the committee for this piece of business, being that I'm the only member, I will ask President Delisio to be my second member this evening, if he so may. Thank you, and with that, from the docket of August 20th, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve a rezoning petition from San Rose Realty LLP by Ronald Cardy to rezone Assessor's Clat number 18, Lot number 500 S, number 500 U, and number 500 B, from plant highway business to general residence A.
Second.
Thank you, motion's in order. For the sake of this vote, I want to remind the councilors that the vote is on the merit of the application and not the project at hand. With that, I'll also make note that we all should have received the planning board vote, they did vote unanimously in favor of this. And with that, I'll open the floor to comments, but again, I just want to remind everyone, and I, and from what I expect out of the committee tonight, is that the comments made are on, on the merit of the license and not the project. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Counsel Fola.
I appreciate that Cardy seems to have acquired more property than it finds itself currently, uh, in a position to use and what it judges to be fruitful. Nonetheless, I believe that, um, the area is one which is subject to fairly constant problems with.
Point of order, so I'm, I'm just going to remind you that this is for the merit of the application and not the project at hand. I understand the concerns with, with drainage and things of that nature, but again, this is based upon the merit of the application and not the project at hand.
I believe, sir, that I am addressing the merit of the application, because I believe that this change in zoning will, uh, create additional problems with drainage and flooding. That's my only comment.
And I'll, I'll address it, again, this is simply a rezone, those concerns are for the backend of this procedure, if approved by this body, then they have to go through the appropriate channels within City Hall and within the state and, and federal levels. So that is, again, not to affect the license application. So with that, I'll open the floor, anybody else? President Delisio.
Yes, if I may just, through the, um, acting chair to Counsel Fola, you know, when I look at this, I'm looking at, I, I worked with this planning board long enough to know that they've vetted all this stuff, and, you know, as we talked about last week, you know, when we talked about a board asking to be added to this, for their name to be added to the end of this committee and have a, um, voting member, non-offici, uh, non-voting ex officio member, the comments were made that, well, it's a committee, they're asking for it. I think that same courtesy should be extended to this board, uh, the, the planning board who vetted this thoroughly over several meetings, I believe, uh, to come to a unanimous decision. So that's where, um, I'm going to take the guidance of the folks that looked at it in a lot deeper issue, in a, in, in a different way than we might, but I appreciate Council of Avis' points about this being about the rezone and not a project, because after the rezone, there becomes, there comes other steps in this process to see if, if a project, whether it's the one Mr. Ward talked about, whether it's other projects would come to fruition. I think it's important that we're focusing strictly on what the rezone petition is.
Thank you, and just to highlight your point as well, President Delisio, even within the certification of vote, I mean, they're saying right here, it's suitable, in their own verbiage, would be suitable. Um, with that, Counsel Holmes, I'll recognize you.
Thank you. Um, did our city solicitor review any of the past, um, I know that, I don't know, there was some lawsuit or EPA kind of ruling from maybe the early 90s or something, has that all been reviewed with our city solicitor and determined to, that this is appropriate to even move forward with?
So I don't have the direct answer to that, so to speak, but what I can say is, I've received nothing that would set off an alarm or any kind of red flag to move forward with the planning board's vote.
Okay.
Should that arise before next Tuesday, I, of course, I'll let everyone know, but as it stands today, the only thing in terms of, you know, feedback is this, a certificate of vote that came down, nothing else that would, you know, need to be brought to light has come down.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Perfect, uh, seeing no others that wish to address, I will put this to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And with that, I will call for adjournment at 7:44. You all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call personnel veterans and human services committee to order at, uh, 7:45. Member is president of my committee is Counsel Waterman.
I can add to the third.
I'm sorry?
I can add to your third as you.
Okay, and, uh, President Delisio is my third. All right, thank you, sir. All right. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve a member in agreement between the city of Attleboro and Luana, uh, public employees, local union, 1144 Labor's Union regarding a grade increase of the wastewater operators effective January 2025.
Second.
Thank you. So basically, um, city and labor's union were able to reach an agreement in regard to a grade increase of the wastewater operators effective January 5th, 2025. Um, it's extremely difficult to find licensed wastewater operators, uh, so the city hired several operators in training who had little or no license and experience, as the city was unable to hire fully licensed operators, which is not an easy thing right now. Um, head operators grade 42 assisted on the job training for the OIT operators, operator training. The city had a successful operator and training program and now has several operators that are higher licensed and more experienced than when they started. The hope is that this, that these former operator and trainer operators continue to learn and grow at Attleboro's wastewater. As such, the city felt it appropriate to promote the head operator at grade 42, who were instrumental in the success of the OIT program, to senior head operators grade 43. Due to various vacancies, the wastewater department has the funding available to cover the cost of this increase, so this should, um, work very well, and, um, and I think it needs to get taken care of. So any other questions, comments, concerns?
It sounds, it sounds perfectly reasonable to me, and.
Absolutely.
Counsel Waterman, Counsel Waterman needs to be recognized by the chair.
Counsel Waterman, sorry.
Yes, I, so it sounds very reasonable to me, and also because they are going to be able to cover it within their department.
Absolutely, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0.
I entertain a motion, I'm sorry, for the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to allow the addition of the marketing events coordinator, A2S2, and shine director, SATS2, positions to the classified in compensation plan.
Second again.
Thank you, Counsel Waterman. So basically, um, this is to be able to, uh, get, to fully help this department, and, um, and also, uh, this is also being paid through, uh, the shine, uh, through the grants and everything, so it's not an added expense, uh, to the city. And, um, and this is going to help, um, with the council and agent to, as we have, um, younger, um, people going through the council and agent, this is going to kind of pull everybody together and help everybody out with, uh, getting, uh, things taken care of that they need to have taken care of. So that being said, uh, any questions, comments, concerns?
Michael.
Uh, President Delisio.
Thank you, yeah, I, I think this is great, this shows considerable, uh, forethought and planning, and I think that we're seeing, uh, some of these roles grow, especially as it impacts this group of people, I think this is going to be, um, beneficial for years and decades.
Yeah, good comment, President Delisio, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments?
No, I'm, I'm pleased.
All right, thank you, Counsel Waterman. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to accept the generous donation of $500 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards for the Sons of the American Legion Post 312 to the Veterans Office.
Second.
Thank you, President Delisio. And, uh, so basically, uh, obviously, um, you know, American Legion's done a lot of great things, and, and then this is going to help the veterans out, and, uh, so we thank the American Legion for this, and, um, very much. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Call for adjournment, adjournment at 7:49.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Waterman. We are adjourned at 7:49. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0.
Public Safety and Emergency Mission Committee to order at 7:49. Myself, Counsel La Boy and Counsel Montal. I have two motions this evening from the docket of February 4th, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve the spending of such funds in any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Police Department regarding the $12,497 fiscal year 24 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant through the Bedford Police and the US Department of Justice.
Second.
Thank you. So, this is a grant that we're receiving. That's exciting. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to appropriate $192,000 from account undesignated fund balance free cash general government to the following: $145,000 to account police overtime and $47,000 to account police detective overtime.
Second.
Thank you. So, we did receive some backup about this, and there were some officers that were on leave, and obviously, vacancies had to be filled, so this just required that some funds had to be moved over for that reason. And the chief just wanted to remind us that it, it is a lengthy process to get the hiring in, so this is just some of those things that sometimes happen. One of the officers was on active military duty, and when, when there's kind of one thing that happens like that, it's a little bit of a domino effect, so everybody has to kind of work to fill that space. So, any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. That's all the business this evening. I'll call for, I'm sorry.
Can I just, may I just say something? So, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Chief Hegney, the POP team, and the mayor. I don't know if anybody read the paper regarding the overdoses that are down, huge, due to the councilors that were hired through the opioid grants. I want to say it was 48 percent, please don't quote me, but it was down a great deal. So, I think Chief Hegney, the POP team, and the mayor deserve credit for putting this together and making it possible for everybody to stay a little healthier, I guess.
Yeah, I love it. I love it.
Thanks.
I will call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 7:51.
City Propagating Claims Committee has no business in this council this evening.
Counsel La Boy? Thank you. Glad to hear it. I would like to call to order the license committee at 7:52. Beside me are Counsel Waterman and Holmes. Just one measure this evening. From the docket of January 7th, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the Class 2 rule application from Daniel Martinez, doing business as R&amp;D Auto Sales at 116 Dickinson Street, with five customer parking spaces and eight display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. I went by the business a couple of times, and there was no vehicles on the roadway or anything that coincided with the complaints that we received. And, let's see, actually, yesterday morning, rather, I met Mr. Martinez there. Everything looked good. He actually, when I mentioned the issue that came across, he, he knew right away the dates that happened, and he, you know, explained to me that they put in a new heating system and all the vehicles that are parked in the gated area on the left side of the property had to be moved. Unfortunately, they went to the roadway. But I did, you know, tell him that future reference, if he could maybe notify the city or even surrounding residents, that would be ideal, and he did agree. And he also mentioned that, you know, everything's good, and he's hoping to propose a new site plan to get some more spots, so that's something to be mindful of. But as far as this goes, I think everything looks good. I, you know, he seemed really cooperative, and like I said, I mean, when he knew the dates before I even had the date in front of me, I was pretty comfortable with his answer, and I seen the new heating system. He showed me it works well. And what it is, it's a waste oil heater, so he's, you know, when he gets cars in from an accident and they're going to the scrapyard, they have to take the oil out, so he said, now I can just heat my shop with it. So, fair enough. But yeah, happy to approve this, comfortable doing so, and I'll open the floor to anyone else that has questions or comments. Perfect. Seeing none, I'll put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And with that, I will call for an adjournment at 7:54.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You are adjourned.
The IT and Infrastructure Committee has no business this evening. Cancel that call for committee meeting at the next appropriate time. That's also true about the Special Committee on Rules and Procedures, which has no business this evening. Call for that committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order at 7:54. We have one piece of business tonight. From the docket of February 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to authorize the payment of the following school department previous year bill.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. The vendor is Amplify, and it's a bill for $2,500.
Second.
Motion's in order, and it's a previous year bill. It's a, it's a mass tutoring company. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I call for an adjournment.
Second.
Motion's in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 7:55.
Thank you, President Delisio. Compensation classification committee has canceled the call for meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. And I'll cancel the Special Committee on Tax Abatement. Sit.
Sit.